All right, this is the committee on the whole. This is Monday, February 5th, 2018. We're at 6:00 PM. I have Counselor Capone.
Yeah.
I have Counselor Delashula.
Here.
I have Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
I have Counselor DePiero.
Here.
I have Counselor Healan.
Here.
I have Counselor Mike Hazy. I have Counselor Matusky. I have Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
I have Counselor McKennan.
Here.
I have Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
I have Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
We have time members present. We do have a call room.
Please rise and...
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Before we start, I have an announcement to make. Counselor Matusky will not be able to attend this evening due to a medical reason. Cork will read the agenda.
All right. This is a resolution out by Counselor Capone that the mayor personally appear at this meeting to discuss real estate taxes, new growth, and implementation of a reduced tax rate given all the development occurring within the city.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Is the mayor present?
The mayor is definitely present.
Okay. Okay.
I just wanted to know that he was...
Need a motion to invite the speakers up then?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Would you please join us? Please state your name for the record.
Pamela Davis, assessor for Everett. What I did was I looked at the last three years and the difference in the residential valuation in the last three years is an increase of 18 percent. The difference in commercial, industrial, and personal property in the last three years is 4 percent. Four. Commercial, industrial, and personal property. Now, the amount of levy each class raises is predicated on the percentage they represent to the whole. And if you look at it from that perspective, in fiscal 18, the residential value was 66.9212 percent of total taxable value. I'm going to call it CIP. That means commercial, industrial, and personal property. Makes it a lot easier for everybody. That represented...
If I could, do you have a copy of the handout for everybody?
I didn't, but I can certainly get this copied and give it to you so you don't have to feel like you write it down.
Okay. And just so I could, CIP has a different connotation to some of us, so we might want to not use the same abbreviations.
Oh, all right.
It's the Capital Improvement Plan is what we're most familiar with, but that's all right.
Okay. The commercial, industrial, and personal property, okay, represented 33.07 percent. Do you want to copy this now?
Yeah. Okay, we'll get a copy.
We all do. We all do.
Thank you.
The bottom line is, what's happening right now in the city of Everett is there is a huge residential value appreciation going on. It first started with multifamilies. It's continuing to be multifamilies, but now even single-family residences are finding a huge amount of increase in value, just appreciation. My opinion, it's driven by the Boston market. The Boston market is very, very hot. The rents are astronomical, so surrounding communities are really being invaded by developers and people that are looking for more choices of properties. So your values are increasing tremendously. I mean, we're seeing now two families going in the 600s and not blinking. So your residential, commercial properties are not selling as quickly right now, so we don't have as much evidence of that type of appreciation. But your commercial, industrial properties are evolving right now. And I do believe that very shortly you're going to find that there will be an increase in value in that sector because of new construction and new businesses that will be drawn, especially with the casino going to be opened. You will also, because of increase in businesses and business types, you're going to get an increase in personal property value, which is huge, has been a big driver in keeping your commercial, industrial values to a reasonably stable percentage of the whole. So when you look at it from the perspective that the amount of levy each type of property is going to raise... Thank you. ...is predicated on the percent of the whole they represent in taxable value, you are seeing, you know, increases in the residential properties. New growth is allowing you to increase the amount of money that can be raised by real estate and personal property taxes. New growth really doesn't have an impact as to your tax I see a lot of blank faces. You can ask me any question you want.
Counselor Capone?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Through you to our invited guests. Thank you very much for being here. A couple of quick questions on the levy limit, the packet that was handed out for fiscal year 2018.
Mm-hmm.
I know that we've got, you've got the prior year's levy, and then you have 2.5 percent growth, and then you have new growth. And in this particular packet, we had $3.2 million roughly of new growth. Can you break down where that came from, residential, commercial, or...
Heavy amount of it was personal property. Residential was second, commercial was third.
Okay. And when you say personal property, items like equipment...
Well, everyone in the Commonwealth is subject to personal property. You're exempt to year-round domiciles, furnishing, and clothing. Anything above and beyond that is subject to personal property. So predominantly, it's your businesses.
Right.
Now, if you're a corporation, that limits to what items that could be taxed. And if you're a manufacturing corporation, almost very little of it can be taxed locally. It's because they pay a corporate tax instead. But you have all your small businesses and your, the electric companies, all of that, district gas, all of those types of properties is a good amount of your personal property value.
And do you know, and you may not know this offhand, so if you don't, that's fine. Do you know how much of this 3.2 million was, like a percentage, was personal property?
I can forward you exactly what each class gave you in dollars.
That would be great. Well, I appreciate that. And following on this...
But again, that's not, the only thing that is doing is allowing you to raise what you're raising in real estate and personal property taxes beyond 2.5.
Right. It increases your levy limit.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So with this one, we had, when we added our new growth and 2.5 over the fiscal year from prior, we ended up with a levy limit of about 110 million plus.
Correct.
And then we applied 12.5 million against the levy for, with the wind payment that came in.
Right.
And it brought us down to 102.5.
As to what you raised in real estate and personal property taxes?
Yeah, for the actual levy for fiscal year 18?
Yep.
So my question is, if we didn't do the 12.5, where would we be? It looks like we'd be at like 115.
That sounds right. I don't have the figures in front of me, so...
So if we were there, then we would have overspent our allowable levy by 5 million?
Yes.
Okay. That's concerning.
But it also looks good from a credit bureau standpoint for you having excess levy capacity as well. So it's a double-edged sword. By putting in that 12 million is what I meant.
Right. So if we didn't, a levy could have been 110.4, and we would have been at 115. What would have happened? We would have had to find 5 million cuts, or...
Yes.
So unfortunately, that 12.5 million that was levied wasn't a full offset against the 110 levy limit.
It was an offset of what you ended up after your estimated receipts from your full budget.
Yeah. I see that, but it really wasn't truly dollar-for-dollar. All right. I don't have any other questions for the guests. Thank you very much for the information.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to echo the comments of Counselor Capone. Excuse me. So if we hadn't put the 12.5 million, we would have been at 115 million.
I'm taking your word for the value, the amounts. I don't have it in front of me, but I would say yes.
So the administration basically played a double-edged sword on the city council by not coming forward and telling us this previous to, knowing this previous to motion.
What, can I ask, is there a motion on the, ready to be made on the floor?
Motion to invite Mr. Demus.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
When you're getting into this end of the conversation, it's not an assessor you want to talk to.
All right. Counselor McGlaughlin still has the floor. I just want, Mr. Demus has some additional information.
Okay. Sorry.
Mr. Demus, good evening.
Good evening.
So Mr. Demus, as Counselor Capone just stated, if we hadn't put the 12.5 million dollars towards the levy, we would have been over by $5 million total. What would have, is that normal practice to go down that formula yearly, or is this something that's happened this year that wasn't seen or foreseen?
No, it actually was foreseen, and actually it was disclosed even before the start of the budget process. So before the start of the budget process, if you take a look, and I think some of you actually have your budget documents here, not only do you have within that budget book all of the information presented to council at the time that they're going to start contemplating what they're going to review for the budget, it also includes a couple of PowerPoint presentations that I did right here in the chamber. And you can sum up those PowerPoint presentations in two ways. One is the overall budget philosophy and what's being, what is being presented to city council. And the other two major component is our five-year financial forecast. So within that five-year financial forecast, that dovetails exactly into the budget presentation for that first year. And what we presented in detail and in summary form, and it's in those budget books prior to starting, was the use of that 12.5 million as a funding source for this year's budget, which is why the Department of Revenue, nobody had any issue with that.
You guys balanced the budget off of a decision that the council may or may not make in the future?
That's what was presented to the council for the council to approve.
Because if the council hadn't voted for the 12.5 million, then you guys didn't actually present a true budget. You guys presented a budget based on potential...
Well, no, you're not...
Potential action of what would happen here in the council chambers.
I strongly disagree when you say that a true budget wasn't presented because a budget is based...
Budget was presented on the fact that 12.5 million would be...
At the time it's presented, it includes a number of estimates. So it's a number of estimates as to what new growth, which I believe Counselor Capone was just talking about, what the calculation of the 2.5 percent would be, as well as what the estimated receipts would be, the local receipts as well.
Sure.
As well as potential additional funding sources. And this is how the city has done it. Those additional potential funding sources include free cash stabilization, as well as those casino monies that came in. When it was presented, the initial $5 million in the prior year to offset the tax rate, I think it was overwhelmingly responded by city council that they thought it was a great first step, and they hope that it continues, and that even more in the future is going to be provided to mitigate potential rate increases in future years. And that's exactly what was just...
But really, at the end of the day, only $7 million was put towards the levy to lower the taxes, because the 5 million had to come off the top immediately to cover...
Right. And Counselor McGlaughlin, one of the things that we'll do, just so that we don't even go down this little exercise that we're going right now, is that as soon as the money that is received and then goes into the community stabilization mitigation account, what we'll do is before the budget's even approved and you even start the year, present those amounts to city council. The only thing that we can't present prior to July 1st is going to be free cash. We have to wait till the Department of Revenue. However, we can present all of our stabilization numbers.
But if the city council hadn't taken the action to put 12.5 million dollars towards the levy, we would have overspent the budget by $5 million. So what I'm concerned by tonight is that the fact that the city government has spent $5 million extra than what technically we had until we made a decision to, a conscious decision to put 12.5. We have the school department spending 8 million. Would you, like, I'm just kind of trying to figure out where this is going. It seems like everybody's overspending. You could tell me I'm wrong, but we can respectfully agree and disagree.
I would respectfully say that I do disagree with you, because what was presented...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming. If he wants to come before us, we can have him. I'd like to have something to say.
Counselor McGlaughlin, please stay on the point. Right now, you have Mr. Demus in front of you.
The mayor said something from the audience.
I understand that, but I would advise her not to take the bait.
Okay.
At this point, you're having questions for Mr. Demus?
No.
So I just wanted to respond.
And also, if both parties could please give the other a chance to finish their comments before jumping on the other.
Yep.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Go ahead, please.
And I just wanted to respond that what was presented to city council at the very onset was both starting off with the revenues and the estimated receipts, and that you to use that information, yourself as city councilors, to get a total budget perspective, to make a determination as to what you're going to be voting and supporting on a budget.
I see it a little bit differently than you, I guess, and we can agree and disagree respectfully. I'm going to yield the floor to my colleagues, but I respectfully, I believe that a budget, true budget wasn't presented. It was presented on the fact that 12.5 million would be given to, from the, when the casino funds. And if that action hadn't happened, we would be in a different spot tonight than we are. So I respectfully disagree the point with you.
Counselor McHaleman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question has been answered in a roundabout way, but I got it.
Counselor DeFlorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Demus, we'd never really get a true budget, because our budget is based on revenues coming in. Is that correct? When you give us a budget, you're looking at the tax bills coming in, the taxes being paid. That's part of our budget, isn't it?
Yes.
Revenues coming in, growth, whatever, okay?
It's a large part of the budget.
Okay. So if you give us a budget in June, and in September, a million people don't pay their taxes, we have to figure out how to cut the budget, because at that point, we're not going to get those revenues in.
We would have to identify how we would balance the budget based upon estimated receipts that were forecasted that weren't coming in. Yes.
Okay. So the point I'm trying to say is, we knew we were getting the 12.5 million dollars. That wasn't revenues that weren't going to come in. That was a sure 12.5 million, which we did agree to put towards the taxes, because didn't we have to hire extra police officers and firemen?
You did.
Because of the casino coming in? So that was the reason why we were getting the 12.5 million dollars, to cover the expenses of the people we hired. So I mean, I know all this was said to us, and I also know that before you came in, Richard Viscay told us that these would be the toughest years for us until the end of 2019. Am I correct?
Yes.
When the school debt will come off, the power plant will hopefully get settled?
So when I came here, and I started sharing some concerns about fiscal 18 and 19, I was told that the former CFO was sharing the same information with everybody.
Right. So we knew, whatever's happening now, we knew it was going to happen, not to this extreme, but we knew more or less that these would be the toughest years for us, because even with the growth coming in, we're really not getting revenues yet. We're not getting revenues from the hotel. We're not getting mail tax. We're not getting liquor tax. We're not getting any of that yet.
That's correct. And as Ms. Davis indicated earlier, we're actually even in a very unusual situation right now. She gave you, threw out a lot of numbers, but just to summarize it as best as I could, and I thought that she did an excellent job, is that there are basically two pots of money to pay the tax levy. You have one residential, and then one commercial-industrial. Well, because of the housing market and numerous reasons, and people's desire to live in this great city, residential valuations, people's houses, single-family, multifamilies are significantly going through the roof, double-digit increases year after year. So the piece of the pie by the residential side of it is getting much larger. Commercial-industrial, while there is some growth, and while there is new growth, if you look at the average increases on commercial properties, they're only around 3% to 4%. So that's why a larger portion of the tax levy is being funded by the residential, the residential properties over the commercial-industrial. Now, we fully expect that to start changing when you get closer to the opening of the resort, because you're going to have additional hotels, you're going to have additional shops, you have Freightliner, a number of businesses that are coming online.
Well, the reason why...
So we do expect to see those valuations increase. We just haven't yet. And unfortunately, the residential piece is growing at a much faster rate than the commercial-industrial. And as such, residential properties are picking up a larger portion of the tax levy.
And by the... I just think that the average residential person, you know, just thought that the taxes were going to go way down this year, not understanding that we're not getting the revenues yet. We're not generating revenues yet.
You know, you have to wait for it to be built.
Right. So, no, I'm talking about everything to be built, not just that. There's a lot of things being built.
Exactly.
There's other revenues coming in, not just from the casino. But unfortunately, it's not in our hands yet. It has to be built, and we have to start generating the money. We haven't done that yet, so, yet, so. Okay. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Counselor McKennan?
Through you, Mr. President, to our invited guests. This is to Mr. Demus. The, I know the first year that we had actually spoke about putting funds towards the tax base was $8 million, correct?
Out of what funding source?
I don't recall at the time.
I don't recall which specific year you're talking about.
I know that we had, this body had put a piece before you, and we were actually going to see if we could actually do it two to three years out. And I know that that was to stabilize the tax rate, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The first year was $8 million. That's what we gave. Last year was, well, this year is 12.5.
Yes.
And then there'll be a third year, correct?
Yes.
And that's to stabilize the tax rate of the increases that we're seeing now, as Ms. Davis had said?
The goal would be to use all available funding sources to help mitigate the tax impact until the resort and the other growth starts to generate. Fiscal '20 is the first year in which you're going to have roughly a full year of the resort opening, as well as all of the other commercial-industrial businesses that we're assuming opening. That's when you're also going to have, start seeing the local tax from rooms and meals tax come in. So fiscal '20 is very bright in the city's future. It's just a matter of how do we get to that point without, at the same time, trying to minimize the impact on the taxpayer?
Absolutely.
So we're using all financial, potential financial sources to get us to that point.
So these three years were just basically to stabilize the tax rate, correct? You wouldn't see a big influx, or you wouldn't see a decrease now? This would just be basically floating it across till the third year?
I don't believe I've ever seen anybody say that they forecasted a significant drop within the first three years prior to opening.
Sure.
I just, I haven't seen that.
Well, I mean, what people are saying now is that we're experiencing something where you have two families that are in the 600s. You have, you know, single families selling above market value pricing. When that does occur, and if we didn't in fact give the 8 million or the 12.5 this year, they would have seen probably dramatic changes in their tax rates, correct?
Yes.
And in addition to that, you have your residential exemption, which increases the residential rate to pay for those credits.
Sure.
Right? And the other thing I wanted to add to this is that appreciation in value does not add to your increase in levy limit. That's not considered new growth. It has to be new construction related. So somebody's house appreciating in $100,000 of value, say, is not going to impact at all your levy limit at all.
Okay.
So...
We have a couple of just unusual items that are happening because of the significant growth in the residential side, where commercial-industrial has not picked up yet.
No, the reason why I ask this, this question specifically, because I believe I was the sponsor on it, along with Councilman Capone, on this piece here, and it was a three-year projected plan.
Yes.
That you had gave us, so...
Yes.
That's why I'm asking the questions on that now.
That is what had been presented three years ago, two years ago, and during this last budget cycle. And that's what kick-started, if you will, each of the budget processes in these fiscal years, is it's all well and good to start talking about, you know, our expenditures and our budget, but if you can't define and project as how you're planning on paying for it, then it's not, it's not even a point to even talk about the actual budget. We have to make sure that there is a funding mechanism in place to move forward. And that's why when I make those presentations at the beginning of each year, that's where we start off.
Sure.
That's our starting point.
No, I mean, I agree. I think right now, if you're looking, so just so the average person at home understands, like, what we're trying to do and what we've done, basically we've done, um, basically on these three years here is basically, it's sort of to level off the taxation rate, correct?
Yes.
So that they don't feel the impact of the, uh, the rise of their property evaluations, correct?
The entire goal was to do everything, the mayor, the mayor and city council collectively, um, in the actions that they've taken over the past couple of years, has been to do what you can to mitigate the increases, um, or the impact on, on residents' tax bills.
Absolutely. So, I mean-
And I'm sure that if you could do more, um, where the mayor could've done more, you, you would, it's, th- th- this is where we are right now.
W- we can't right now because of the, the, well, the forecast that we're, we're seeing now, but also, uh, we need to have that third year come into effect.
You need to have that third year come into, come into effect, but at the same time, let's not forget, the city has made great strides from a financial position, um, as to building up reserves and, and having the city in where it needs to be-
What's the bond rating right now?
Which was reflective-
What's our bond rating right now?
Which is what I was gonna say, which is reflective of our bond rating being increased to a double A plus-
Mm-hmm.
-which is one step below a triple A rating. And that's because the city's done, um, a very good job in managing its finances, and putting the reserves to where investors and bondholders would expect you to see. It's one of the things that's gonna allow this city to make considerable investments, um, in the coming years, at a lower cost than we would be able to in the areas of transportation and infrastructure that are gonna help the city to continue to grow. And by maintaining the balances and the financial position that we're currently in, that has allowed us to receive a higher bond rating. Um, one, again, that is low, just one step lower than the best bond rating, you're, basically your credit score that you can receive, which will allow the city to do more infrastructure, do more transportation, at a lower cost, and get more done in a quicker manner.
No, I, I, I agree. Uh, I think that the, the three-year plan was, uh, it's a correct way to go, actually, and, uh, that's why we proposed it from the body, we voted on it, and then the mayor signed off on it. So, that, that right there would alleviate the tax base right now, of, of an impact statement from, you know, what's gonna be happening with the raise of the property evaluations now, I would think. So, we sort of did help out with that aspect of it. Now, the third year-
I, I would concur, it did, yes.
Now, the third year on that, um, i- it depends on what we have in available funding to actually put it out there for that source to actually kick in for the third year, correct?
That is correct.
So, it would go in, you would give us sort of an idea of where we're at.
I, I, I absolutely will. So, again, consistent with prior years, when we start this process, I will give you the final, I, I do update the five-year financial forecast. I will update all of our available reserves, and all of our known and expected, um, revenue sources coming in, that, uh, both the mayor and the city council will be able to use all of that information collectively to make a determination as to what budget and how best to move forward.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I have two speakers left that have not spoken, then we will go through the second round. Uh, but if I could ask one question from the chair, only because it's a some, kind of along the lines of some of what Counselor McKenon was talking about. Uh, some of the properties that are being purchased at a above-market value for development purposes, residential properties, does that have any kind of bearing or any kind of play on the-
You're saying it's above-market value, but after so many sales, it becomes the market. Um, it, for instance-
What I was trying to ask was whether or not the, uh, the properties that are going for higher market are having an impact on the rest of the property value.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But, uh, we, we categorize them in, in their types, their locations, uh, quality of construction, conditions, um, where they rehab before or after the sale, a- all those things are taken into effect. So, we've determined what each property would, uh, how much it appreciated, or in some markets, deep appreciated, um, given comparable sales throughout the city.
All right, thank you. Counselor Del Sol.
Good evening. I have a couple of, uh, questions. What's gonna, the first question be, why are we five million over the budget? I, I might not be a simple answer, but we're all, what I, I don't wanna do is, I'll let you answer the question, is, we're giving you 12 million, 12.5 million to level off the taxes, 'cause we're five million over. So, what's gonna happen next year, that we get, if you could correct me, is it 12 million next year?
12.5 million.
12.5 million, the casino again. So, now, the 12.5, some of that, again, is gonna go towards the taxes, which is fine, but we're chasing, we're chasing over budget every, and the, this year and probably next year.
Well, actually, uh, the use of that 12.5 still allowed the city to close the year and report with a state an excess levy capacity of approximately eight million dollars. The point is, there was, you do have that additional, um, taxing ability. The, the thing is, and I, I know the mayor doesn't, and I know, um, I'm assuming city council doesn't, you don't wanna put all of that on the backs of the, of the taxpayers. What we're trying to do is to get to fiscal year '20. Um, I don't know what the numbers are going to be presented for this year moving forward. I can tell you, I'm in the process of starting the, updating the five-year financial forecast. Budget documents, um, have been sent out to all of department heads. Um, we're in the process of, um, the mayor's been settling, um, with the unions. Um, we're locking those in to be able to give us firm numbers to be, be present to city council. Um, so, consistent with what we've done in prior years, we're gonna take all of that information and collectively present that to the city council, and for, um, the city council to take a position on the mayor's proposed budget.
Okay, next question is, on the home, the key, key parent values are going up, which is great, but be, when, if you don't sell your house, and you can answer this question, what benefit do I have as a homeowner, if I, if my house is worth eight hundred thousand dollars, and I pay three, that's great. If I don't sell it, what am I gaining out of my value of my house going up without selling it?
Equity.
Correct?
Equity.
Right, but-
That, this is, this is not an Everett phenomenon, this is nationally, this is what real estate is.
I know, but I just keep hearing it's going up, it's going up, it's going up, which, which is great, but the benefit of without selling the house is, that's the equity.
Mm-hmm. And for people that have financial conditions, we, we reach out to them all the time for whatever exemptions we can offer. We, we try to do the best we can to help everybody. You've, you've increased the residential exemption another five percent.
Correct. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you for Counselman Siminelli. Uh, with the residential and the commercial going through the roof, do you see a decline of those properties going down after the casino was open in 2019, and the residential and the commercial rates going up because of the casino?
No. Um, I don't see a decline in value. Um, again, I, I don't believe the increases in value you've, you've witnessed so far has anything to do with the casino in the residential section. I think it's the strong Boston market that's driving all this, the strong Cambridge market as well. And your, um, commercial industrial properties, I think, are going to show an increase in value once you have the casino up and running, and there are all kinds of ancillary businesses that are gonna support the casino and all the activities. So, you're gonna get an increase there. Your power plant is, that, uh, agreement ends in 2020, so whether we win or lose the case we have before them now, you're gonna get a huge increase in value from the power plant, which is gonna increase your levy limit considerably. Um, so, I, I don't see a downside to any of this, um, at all.
The city right now is a, is a desirable, um, place to be. We don't foresee that changing. If anything, we see the continue, the city to continue to be more desirable for people to wanna come and move into the city and live in the city.
I took the concern for the, uh, the citizenry, uh, in the city of Everett, as Counsel, uh, Del Sol alluded to, is that, uh, the people that are here now have a certain income. And we're, we're pretty much asking us to leave. You're asking the people that can't afford to live in Everett, even though it's the most desirable city in the Commonwealth, because of its proximity to Boston, which is very, very good. What the, what I think some of the council members are trying to say is that, what happens to those of us that are here still, even though you've increased it five percent, evidently, it's not enough right now.
Well, you have o- other options too. If, if you look at the statutory exemptions, the exemptions for veterans, the exemptions for blind, the exemptions for senior citizens over 65, um, you can increase the amount of the exemption you offer. You can, um, on the ones that have financial limitations to those exemptions, you can increase the asset limit, you can increase the income limit. So, uh, we can do-
Mr. Mayor, would you, uh, do I have a motion to invite the mayor? Do I have a second? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Just want to, was that your question, or was that Senator's question?
Yeah, and if I could, before you, you start, I just, if I could, uh, Counselman Siminelli, please. Uh, Mr. Sire, I just need to, I need to remind you that you're here to translate, um, Counselman Siminelli's, uh, issues.
Mr. Chairman-
It's a trap, I understand, but you really need to-
No, no, I wasn't in a trap, neither was Mr. Siminelli. He wrote down exactly what I said. My response was exactly what he wrote down. I appreciate your concern for thinking that I'm gonna be involved. I haven't as yet, and I don't plan on to.
I just wanna clarify, and that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you.
Can, uh, do you, would you like me to answer that question?
If, yes, please.
Can you just re- repeat that question that, uh, you asked?
With the residential and the commercial going through the roof, do you see a decline of the properties going down after the casino is open in 2019?
No, the second one, this, we answered that one, the one regarding affordability.
Is the affordability, the affordability, um, is a concern for the citizens that live in the city of Everett-
Right.
-in that they may not be able to afford the increase of their properties?
Right.
That they may not have the income-
The renters or the property owners?
The property owners.
The property owners. Um, meaning that their taxes, to, back to what you said, that your va- your prop, your value goes up, but the tax is also going up, is that what you kinda alluded to, too?
Yes, and I've had a few people call me and say, "Why are my taxes going up?"
Right.
I mean, wind's not gonna save the world, save the city.
No, no.
And they see a lot of spending going on, "Why are my taxes going up?"
When you say a lot of spending going on, can you make, allude to a place where you see a lot of spending going on?
Drive around, they see the, which is a good thing, no, don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
They see the parks, they see the streets, they see the islands.
Right. That's also driving their value of their property up, but go ahead.
Correct, which goes back to what we're just talking about there.
But those are also voted on by all of us, not just, so it's not just me. I'm dri- I am driving the value of property up. That's my goal. My goal as a mayor, to make the city more valuable every day, to make it, um, to bal, to make, to balance our, 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 our problems. Eight thousand kids in the school system, right? Um, that, that issue there is just a, you know, that's a tough issue. You have to accomplish more buildings, more spaces, more, more, more people to work in those buildings. Do some of them even live in the city, sometimes you question, and we all hear that, right? Uh, we provide a lot of services that other schools don't provide, so sometimes that could drive people to come into our community, but that's not here nor there. But to answer your question, tonight, um, we have on account, uh, before the ZBA, an item to provide 77 units of affordable senior housing, and I believe it's six or nine, seven, um, homes for first-time homeowners. Um, that would be, um, you know, at the, at, let's say the going rate for a, a, a single family right now in Everett's about 500, these will range from 275 to 325. Um, it's the percentage of, of, um, I'm, I'm, I'm missing the term, but it's a, you know, it's affordable housing. So, if you're really concerned, you should all be before the ZBA tonight in favor of that project. I know Counselman DePero sent a letter a while back, I think Counselman McGlaughlin sent a letter actually a while back, but I would, I would implore you to come before the ZB tonight. These are the types of developments you wanna see. If, I, I just got a report done, and I wanna, I'm gonna share it with you regarding developments that are happening in the city, um, that the ZBA has voted on, approved. Um, you know, think, people may think the mayor has some sort of, uh, juice in the ZBA. All I do is appoint them, and then you approve the appointment, and then they vote the way they'd like, right? That's it. I don't get involved, uh, but I'm gonna start going to them and voicing my, my, um, pleasure on items and displeasure on items. But when they vote for developments, like the one down, uh, that, uh, they're, um, not, that the, um, post-road developers, Andy won't tell you, but the, um, development that, on wood waste. And when those units, a hundred of them, are about two, I, I don't wanna specify exactly, but I looked at the number of kids will come out of that development, it was staggering. That's the two-bedrooms, three-bedroom units. We talked, there's a development happening on Bell, um, Bell Rock Street, I know, is it, um, on Tremont Street? Forty micro-units, zero kids come in front of development, projected. So, we need to change our zoning. Actually, our zoning prohibits a lot of these developments, and, and it's, they're getting voted on, and that's driving, uh, you know, some problems in our community. Um, we do transportation improvements, rapid bus lines, silver lines, commuter rail stations, that will drive up property values, but also reduce maybe the amount of kids living in the city. Not anti-family or anti-children, but we, um, we're a gateway community. I always say, we're the richest poor city around. We're a gateway community, but there's a lot of, a lot of things that we cannot afford to keep doing. And this is what's, what's happening, right? You wanna provide all the best things for, for your children, and for your residents, um, but it's starting to become a, a real premium to provide those services. Um, you know, it's a balancing game I play every day, uh, to make sure that, uh, we keep families in here, um, and make, keep it affordable, and that's why I'm looking at the micro-unit type, because what's happening is people, there are residents that are taking a two-family home and living in one bedroom. I mean, that's happening, right? Um, and they're taking that, let's say it's three-bedrooms is home, and it's three actual families, it could be the Sire, the Maria, and Demus family living in that house with their children. We're not unable to tax that two-family to really ref, to ref, to reflect the value we need to, 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 uh, pay for those families. If you were to change zoning and to do things like micro-units, you can still move a family in a 500 square foot unit, which they're doing already. But now we're able to tax this property, you know, a little higher, get more money, and maybe pay for those kids in the school system, or pay for the, you know, so to make, pay, the, everyone should be paying their fair share, almost like the trash program, right? You give one barrel per home, per unit, you want them more, you know, so everyone's kinda paying their fair share. There are people that own properties that aren't paying their fair share of expenses in the city, where others, like you for instance, you have no more kids in the sys- system, you just, you know, you're, you're a, you're a single-family home, you throw a little, limited amount of trash away, you're paying more in services to make up for someone who owns a, a two or a three-family, and that's just, and, and they're not doing anything illegal, because they, they take, they're not, there's no padlock doors, we're going to the units. I mean, they're, the houses is, you know, we can't say, "Oh, move this family out," we can't tell them to do that. You know what I mean? So, those are the kind of issues we're facing. Um, but to stop improving our community, like, like not to do parks over, or water, or sewer, or whatever, whatever may be, you're looking at, you know, fixing up buildings, that will just drive our values down, um, and then we'd be in a, you know, a community that's no, it's undesirable to live in. Um, but inclusionary zoning that you passed, linkage fee that, uh, you passed, uh, forward over to the city, to the state to get, to get some monies on these bigger developments to provide relief, um, or to make, uh, or start a fund that we could create more affordable housing units. Um, the, 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 uh, the group that's before the ZBA tonight is a s, is a great start to, to help our seniors stay in our city, and to help young families stay, and that's what we wanna try to do, is set, you know, changing zoning to reflect more senior housing, more affordable housing. Um, and then all- And then also, you know, I know a lot of you came to the Square study, the Square, the Square Urban Renewal Plan meeting, you know, that, that, we have a potential to really do some really good developments that we can, you know, in the years coming, you know, generate some good tax revenue to help, to help offset the different things that are happening in the community. But I get those same calls and questions, I mean, and you have the issue before, you know, what the schools looking for eight million dollars, they, they hired too many employees. We gave them two million dollars before the school, before their budget, we gave them two million dollars above net school spending. And, you know, now they're, you know, they're, you know, they have to do, as you know, a lot of you have contacted me, John, I apologize, I've not called you back, Mike, I apologize, and Leo, I apologize, the three of you have called me on the same issue over the weekend, I've kind of been feeling a little off. But we're trying to help them. We're giving them the monies that they, they use to fix up the old high school and some improvements they made at the, any capital improvements they've made, we're giving them all the, fulfilling that obligation, and we're giving them some more, we're giving them the Medicaid reimbursement money, which is about a million and a half dollars, we gave them another million, another million dollars from-
About a million, three in the revolving?
Another million, three in the revolving accounts, so we gave them about, already about four, close to four?
Four point five.
Four point five out of the eight requests. I can't see giving them any more. I know that they're contacting you, and I know that, I, I, I love that the children are getting involved, that's, it's great, because I want to talk to them about it, you know, and have them understand, we just can't come up with another three, four million dollars, and, 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 you talk, talk about truth and budgeting, that, you know, that's a, that would be four million dollars that we're now taking from stabilization, we don't even have any free cash, we have to take it from our stabilization, then you talk about your bond rating. Now, if our bond rating goes down, my goal is to get our bond rating to a triple-A bond rating community, which then we borrow money at, you know, zero plus one percent, or whatever it is, right? That will save us a lot of money in the long run, so we can keep doing improvements, keeping, improving our city. It's all, so it's all tied in, now this is like a, you know, but to reduce your, reduce your savings is not a good thing to do in your home, and it's not a good thing to do in your city. Sometimes you just have to go without certain things, you know, certain services, and I have to look at my budget, too. I think Council McLaughlin made a good point, comment, and I appreciate it, because I always thought my budget was, was great, was good, but if that's not the case, then I have some cutting to do myself, personally, and I'm going to just look at that really hard this year. I don't want to sacrifice improvements. I have to look at, you know, when people are retiring, or, you know, cutting those positions out of the budget, I mean, it's, it's difficult, but, I mean, there's a lot of factors, but, you know, my main goal is that everyone who's in the pension system when they retire collects their pension here, the city's bond rating stays positive, so everybody owns a home, they can build equity, and someday sell their home for extra money, and whatever it may be, or pull equity, pay off their kids' college tuitions. But yeah, my, you know, taxes going up is, I can't afford it, I can't imagine others, you know, I look at my tax bill and I'm like, my wife gives me, you know, grief, my dad's talking about his water bill and his taxes, and I feel, sometimes I feel like-
Frustrated.
I'm frustrated, you know, I'm frustrated myself, you know, and, you know, yeah, you know, hope everything goes well down the street, and the building stays, building's going to be built, a topic for another conversation another day, but, you know, I feel confident that's, it's going to stay a resort, not what Mayor Carratone wants to see, his latest thing is, why not build affordable housing there? I think, you know, two billion, a two billion, a two-billion-dollar construction, I don't think you can build affordable housing units there, but it's, it's going to stay a resort casino, we know that. And I think when that comes in play, that's going to help out a lot, that, those revenues can help out a lot. And we always told you, and I think I, we always saw that these, these years were our toughest years. The power plant issue is not going as we'd like it to have gone, and I know we have an executive meeting about that soon, we still have great, great, a great, great hope there. We have some good conversations that are happening with them now and with some other people, and I'll explain that to you in the executive session soon, but they do come to full valuation in two thousand and twenty, you know, that, twenty-one, I mean, that's two, three fiscal years away from, from us, so, but nineteen is going to be the toughest year, twenty is a lot of relief, and it's a lot of the school debt that's going to be falling off, which is good. Now we're talking about, you know, possibly building something I've always wanted to do, is, you know, is build a, bring vocational back, you know, it's my idea, and, you know, the superintendent and the assistant superintendent are actually going with it, because, for multiple reasons, they're going with it, but we're looking at, you know, possibly renovating the old high school to add more classrooms there, but there, there's a lot of things that are happening, and I always promised you all that, that I would put a package together of projects and show you what those costs would be, and that's my goal still, so I'm not going to piecemeal you projects, right? If it's, you know, with the stadium, the whole stadium, that's, you know, what you read in newspapers, don't always believe, I think you guys all know that, contact me anytime, but, you know, Everhuis Stadium has not been sold. You know, I think what's happening down at, I talked about in my city address, what's happening down, if I were anyone buying property, I would buy property down off of Main Street and off of Tremont Street, and that whole area, because what we're doing, we're connecting that whole area to the pedestrian footbridge over Assembly Road Tea Station, you may see a pedestrian footbridge built right down the GE Parkland to a new station someday, or in Malden, between Malden and Wellington, you have all those bike paths, Senator, just help us get some more money to tie in those bike paths nicely, we have, we are tying those paths into the Assembly Road Tea Station, you know, when there's modeling, a civil line extension, a commuter rail stop, as you all know, that is like really happening, and that is so close to that area, and that's going to drive up values, and that's going to, you know, you'll see more hotel rooms, which is going to help us in the long run. Yeah, right now, we're going through some growing pains, and we got, we got to make some cuts, but I forecast a lot better days for our residents, and I'm not going to say no new taxes, I killed the president before, I'm not going to say we're going to reduce taxes, but it's on my agenda to try to, to fix that, but my biggest thing is, is to work on affordable housing for seniors and families, and to find areas where we can zone and do that, work on zoning changes in, in the Everett Square area to entice hotel uses, or, you know, smaller, like micro-unit uses, where usually the people have a little more income, and they spend it downstairs in the restaurants, and that, that kind of gets the commercial, commercial properties, you know, desire for people to want to buy a building, and a commercial building drives up the cost, you know, all those, all those great things, and I can go on and on, but if you have any other questions, but just to answer that one question, Councilman Semenelli, you know, we are trying to make a best, best effort on a daily basis to, to worry about everybody, those who are renting and those who are paying mortgages, and we want to keep them here. I mean, there's a shortage of housing, you know, that's another reason why house values are never going up. It's not anything that we've done, you know, yeah, we've done all, it's a nice, but it's short of the housing, and it's a nice community to move to, because of all we've done, the new parks, the new, you know, new schools, that's enticing to people, young families, right? Libraries, they like that stuff, this is stuff that we've done together. But-
Why do you want more money? Because I've got to go to the hospital.
Oh, you got no round on me? I'm the opposite of Bill Belichick? I wonder who's smarter.
Councilman Hamlin. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if my question was answered, but we got a lot of information that came forward. But anyway, I'd like to continue on with, with Councilor Semenelli, and I was talking about, and that's what happens to the people that have these houses, where the, the price is going, the cost of the houses is going up, that they can't really afford to pay the taxes. Well, you know, with the resort coming online, with the food taxes and room taxes and so forth, with the other hotels coming online, with the development that was supposedly going on, coming online, the city of Everett will be in a funny position, we'll be actually making a lot of money.
Yeah.
And, you know, the rule is, and that if the budget that we all have, a part to do with it, you know, is that we're not allowed to collect taxes on what we don't need. So if a budget comes in and we have money that offsets that budget, the value of the property will not go down, but the tax rate will go down, because we own only so much money, we can't take more than what, what's being asked, so that, you know, if, if all the things work out really good, and we have all this extra funds coming into us-
Unless you put a line on it in the budget that says thirty million going on stabilization.
Right, right, but, but it's got to, it's got to go down, because if, we can't just throw money out the window, and hopefully that we'll understand that we just don't want to buy new shades with, with pictures on them, because that's, that's not our job, you know? So we have to, us, we have to all understand, too, that when the budget comes through, I mean, we have to decide if we want to let some of these things go through, that have to, I don't mean anything about, I don't even know what's coming through, but, you know, that's our job, too, is to make sure that things stay at a reasonable rate and a reasonable desire of what we want to have done in the city. We don't have to do everything the first year, we can do it in a ten-year period, all the things that we want to do, but you got to understand that the people have to pay for it, too, and they just don't have the money. You got an older person that lives in a, a three-family house, not me, because I'm also, but people that do, and they rent to their, their son, or they rent to their neighbor that's been there for thirty-five years and everything, they can't afford those rates and everything, and they can't charge those people anymore rent. So what's going to happen when these people, they can't afford to pay their taxes, because they don't want to charge money to these people, and these people have no place where, where to go. So that's why I say that, you know, eventually, hopefully, the tax rate itself will come down, not the value of the property, but the tax rate itself will come down, so that's what I'm hoping for, and I think that that's-
And by doing that, you mean by putting more money towards the budget?
Yes, that's, so what I'm saying is that, is, this is true what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, right.
I want someone to say it's true, okay.
Right.
All right, okay, that's what my question is, to get a true answer, that's all.
So, so, I mean, what the mayor said was that if we take in an additional thirty, well, yeah, we got to take in at least thirty million, probably more, because of meals and hotel taxes, that revenue that we're taking in, if we don't have a specific place for that revenue to go to, it automatically offsets the tax.
It would reduce the amount, yes, the amount that we would have to raise the levy by.
Right.
Absolutely.
But that's on our plan. Our plan is to take that money in, but to, let's say in the budget, we could say thirty million going on stabilization fund, correct? And then it would not offset the taxes. Then we, then we could then designate, if we want to take eight million or ten million to offset taxes, is that how we would do it?
That is correct. So the city has a number of financial policies, you know, for example, as soon as free cash is certified by the department, the city's been putting fifty percent away.
I just want people at home to think that once that thirty million has come online, it's automatically going to, it could automatically reduce the budget.
That would be, yes, it could, it's not a lot of-
But it wouldn't make fiscal sense for us to do that.
It, it, it's going to be a determination that will have to be made, the amount to be made by you and City Council during the budget process.
Right, well, we, right, there's, I think that's something we'll work on as a time-
In addition, with individuals that, that are saying they can't afford their tax bill, the assessors office is having a conference at the Conley Center Wednesday at eleven o'clock, and they're going to review to any of the audience going-
So what the mayor's saying, they call him the mayor, because he was the mayor at one time, but Councilman Hamlin is saying, there are a lot of people, like my dad, who have charged people for rent the same amount of money-
Right.
-for the last twenty-plus years. Their, their property now, back then when it was two-hundred-thousand-dollar property value, is now valued at, let's say, seven-hundred-thousand dollars.
Correct.
Right? So, the budget has gone up, it goes up every year, unfortunately, so- Their, their, their property is more valuable.
True.
The budget has gone up. Their rate may be lower, right, but they're still, now, they're paying this certain amount of money, they can't, they don't raise the rent on their son, or whomever, the other two units, so that, you know, and-
Their bill is higher.
Their, their bill is higher, and they're not, you know, it's, yeah, so it's an, especially if they have a mortgage, most, 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 most times they don't have a mortgage, right? But they're a senior and they're living on a fixed income.
And, and we have, what I'm trying to say-
That's why we need to do is, we need to provide, find more place, more developments for affordable housing, so we can, you know, get these people who live in these units out of these units into affordable housing units, right?
But we can also give them a break on their existing bill if they, if they fall under the statutory exemptions that are available in the city.
So by charging less money?
Well, for instance, if, if you're over sixty-five and you have a certain income amount and a certain asset amount, you may qualify for an additional thousand dollars off your bill. If you're legally blind, you get five hundred dollars off your bill. If you're a veteran with a ten percent service-connected disability, you get another four hundred dollars off your bill. And, and that is all going to be reviewed on Wednesday at the Conley Center at eleven o'clock. In addition, there are what they call deferrals, so a senior citizen can go into a deferral program and get these exemptions, and if they still can't afford the balance, they can defer the balance and pay upon death for sale of the property. So that, what I was trying to say to you before is, there's all kinds of avenues available to people who are in a situation where they feel as though they can no longer live in their home, who want to.
Do we put, do we, do we put these in the tax bill? Do we send these notices to taxpayers that these are available?
It's on the back of the bill, yes.
It's on the back of the bill?
Yeah.
That all these programs are available?
It says exemptions, it does, it's, it's way too much to put it on, you know, in all the information, but we annually give a, a talk at the senior center-
So maybe we should annually send on the tax bill all these exemptions, too, and they're like written out, nice and big.
Okay.
Yeah, and just the next tax bill, we should do that.
So, I, I just wanted to give you a comfort level, if you, if you have a constituent who's making that claim, don't hesitate to have them call our office, so we can review their situation and see what other exemptions may be available to you. And if you want, we can have a meeting in the future and go over what the limitations are, and see if you have a, want to increase the limitations to make more people eligible. Those avenues are definitely available to you, in addition to all that the mayor's doing and what you're doing to, to mitigate these costs.
I don't want to be fresh, but, you know, our relatively people in there are kind of smart, and they're probably getting all of these benefits now.
Right.
You know?
I, I don't feel like that's true, because there's so limited a number-
Yeah, some of them don't know, and I know someone tonight that didn't know he was getting a discount, and he does now, but anyway, but, no, a lot of them don't know, but, and I think, is this what we're going to talk about Wednesday? I mean, at the Conley Center, not you, but?
At, at the Conley Center Wednesday, that's what we're going to be talking about, but I'm also going to instruct Eric and Pam that the next tax bill, that we send all these-
I heard you say that, yeah, but that might be a great, great place to start with these people, to let them know that there's lots more out there than what they're really getting, you know?
We've been doing that for about the last four or five years.
Just, I mean, you all read the article about the schools and the deficit, right? I just wanted to also make, make a point that with that new law, that, the law regarding the, not gateway certified, but the-
Direct certification.
Direct certification of, of kids that are here, going to school, that have not been here more than five years, and aren't getting any sort of subsidies, we've now lost the funding for those children, which amounted to, you know, a good amount of money, millions, millions of dollars, so I don't want to cash, there, there is no one to blame here for really anything. The blame here in Everett is, we provide a lot of great services.
Oh, we do.
We, we do, city, schools, police, fire, there's one thing that we're not short of here in Everett, is providing services for, for our residents, and that's like the million-dollar question, how do you balance that? And we're hearing it from our taxpayer friends who own properties that, you know, can't afford it anymore, and then we hear it from our children who say, I want this pro, and they keep going, right? And, and, you know, I mean, it's so- And we're hearing it from our taxpayer friends who own properties that, you know, can't afford it anymore. And then we hear it from our children who say, "I want this pro," and they keep going, right? And, you know, it's so, it's like, you know, it's difficult. And that's why I rely on you also as a group to, you know, to... You know, your advice, you know? This is a group effort, you know? Because at the end of the day, it's my budget, but it's approved by you. You know, and I want you all to feel comfortable when we do that, what level of services we're providing, what parks we're doing over. Even a simple park like Sacramento, how much was it? Three million dollars did we spend? Thank you. Three point one million dollars. It's a great, beautiful park. When we were kids, we played on rocks and glass. And we survived, right? We survived. But, you know, it was fun. But you know what I mean? Mr. President, thank you. I want to keep going on.
Okay, Councilor McLaughlin?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you said there is nobody to blame. Unfortunately, the formulas have been changed in the state government and that's hurting our community. I think that's some of what we're going to talk about on Monday night, in the way the formulas have been changed. So to look at who to blame, it's really the administration at the top in the state house. Because the way Everett and Chelsea and other surrounding communities have been drastically hurt over the past few years is unfair to our community. And we need to finally address that once and for all. And that is nobody on the local level or our state delegation to blame for that. But it's something that we're going to talk about hopefully next week on Monday night.
True.
That being said, Councilor Del Sol brings up the point of values. And I know equity, raising value brings out equity. Mr. Mayor, somebody like yourself just built your home. You don't care if your house is valued at a million or three million dollars. You don't need equity in your home. You're going to live there for the next twenty-plus years. You're going to raise your family there. You're going to be there for...
No, I, if it's valued at three million, I would like that, yeah.
But it doesn't, but what I'm saying is you'd rather not have your taxes continuously increase in every year because your value at the end of the day doesn't mean nothing to you. That's just a number floating out there because you're not gaining off of that in any way, shape, or form. So the only thing that you're negatively hurting...
You actually are gaining if you're...
You're gaining down the road if you were to sell your home in years later. But what you're getting hurt by every year is the number on your tax bill that continuously increases. That's what's hurting.
So the only way we...
I mean, do you agree with that to a point?
Yes and no, to a point. The only way we can reduce taxes is reduce spending.
Yeah.
It's, that's simple. That's the simplest way to reduce taxes is reduce spending. Or, as on the account that you have, is to bring in new developments. And those developments need to be...
Smack.
What was it where we used? Net positive? No, what was it where we used? Net gain. A net gain development, right? And it's not some of the developments that the ZBA have been approving for a while. It needs to be net gain.
No, I think you see it in Boston and other bigger communities that these small unit developments that bring in great benefit to their communities because they're not draining the services from the community at the same time of bringing in new residents.
What's happened on Tremont Street...
So when you see Boston, South Boston, over in South Boston and Seaport District and you see in other parts of the city in Boston, it's a huge benefit for them because they're bringing in new tax dollars and they're not draining services at the same time.
Very curious to see with Mr. Antonelli's development down on Tremont Street, when it's completed, what we get for numbers out of that building. You know, that will be a real telltale to us. It's forty units, microunits. I mean, if there is zero impact, schoolchildren. And like I say, I don't love schoolchildren. I love schoolchildren. I have a couple myself, right? But it's just a balance. We have to balance the city, you know? It's so, you know, if that's a zero impact, which the report I just got, and I'm going to share with you. I want you, it's from an econ development, and I want to share with you part of it. It's not finished yet. It's still in the draft form. But if that development proves to have zero impact on our residents and we can tax that at whatever, value at... What are forty microunits can be valued at, Pam?
Ten million?
No, I wish.
Let's see. You figure three hundred a unit roughly?
Twelve million?
Yeah, somewhere around there.
Yeah. That'd be great, right? And I mean, twelve million dollars at the tax rate that we have now, I mean, you know, it's a good...
Say fourteen is a...
Yeah, so that's some good money coming in to offset, you know, taxes.
I agree wholeheartedly. And I think these conversations are very healthy and I think they're very important, especially at this time where we are, especially what we see coming down the road potentially. I want to thank you for coming today, Mr. Mayor. I think you've done a great job. But I think the bottom line is that we need to look at everybody's budget across the board. The city's budget, the school department's budget, and we need to make some sound decisions going forward. And I think we're just entering a new budget season. And I know we do a great job on Ways and Means reviewing budgets, I mean, bills every month. But I think it's all of our responsibility to look, to look at how we can tighten our belts on everybody across the board. And you can't blame the finger to any one individual or any one party. I think it has to be a collaborative effort. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you. Councilor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I threw you to the mayor. I'm the sponsor of this piece and hearing him an hour and fifteen minutes later, I get to actually talk to you about it. So...
You're a good sponsor then.
So with this piece, Mr. Mayor, my concern, you've heard it from everyone else. I'm sure you're hearing it from everybody. You're hearing it from your family, apparently.
Yeah.
So that's a tough audience to play to. The reality is, everybody's feeling it. The good news, property value's going up.
Right.
I said it at our meeting. We'd rather have them going up than down because that presents a whole other kind of problem. But the reality is unless you're selling or unless you're tapping into the equity, it's really not doing anything for you right then and there. The concern that I have, and one of my colleagues has suggested that we put this into, you know, into the committee for a presentation. And the reality is, the decision is above the pay grade of everyone else at the table but yourself. It's really a policy decision. And so I'm trying to get an idea of where your thought process is with it because I know you understand the tax situation on people. And we talk about affordable housing and affordable housing happens in several manners. It happens with property owners, renters. And if the expenses go up on the property owner, it's going to go up on the renters. So affordable housing kind of becomes a thing of the past. With all the development that we have going on, hopefully, Project Towne Street's going to stay. I have no reason to think it's not going to. So that should be fine. We've got other things in the pipeline with regards to evaluations that should help alleviate some of the burden. In this time, and you hit it on the head, it all comes down to services and in spending. And in this time, where we have this kind of growth, this kind of valuation, everything else that's happening, yeah, I really, from my perspective, I really want to see a commitment to trying to drive the tax rate down. You know, you hear it from everybody that, you know, they can't afford this, that, and the other thing. We've got people that are going to get driven out of the city. That's what's going to end up happening. And, you know, the microunits, we've got a lot of that development going on everywhere. People get very creative. And, you know, to think that there won't be children coming out of the microunits, it's like, you know, it happens. They're going to, it's going to happen. So there will be impacts there with the school department, which already seems to be overtaxed. So I wanted to kind of get your perspective on it. Where you see it going, I know that these couple of years are the tough ones. And that's why collectively, we've tried to put as much as we could against the levy in order to try to maintain the tax bills. Unfortunately, the bills still go up. But we want to try to drive those numbers down even lower than they are now, try to bring those rates down because we have the ability to do that. You know, maybe not right now, but over the next couple of years, we should be in a much better position. And I just wanted to kind of get your thoughts on it and, you know, how you feel about that.
Yeah, no, I mean, I just kind of, I think I just said it. We, my commitment is always to try to reduce the burden on people, on taxpayers. But I just, I've realized that people have become accustomed to having so many services that we provide for people that, you know, they weren't provided when Rosa and our families came from other countries, right? I mean, we provide a lot. And we have to look at what we're providing for everybody. That will right there, service, providing certain services could reduce your costs in your community. The other thing is zoning changes. You know, I had real, Tony Souzer and I had this, not had, we've been having these conversations with our consultants that are working on our zoning changes for us. Design standards for developers who are developing housing. Not those developing affordable housing, but those developing market rate housing to make those developments not hotter, but more expensive for them to develop, which would drive up the prices for these units, which would drive up the amount of taxes that we could generate that would reduce the amount of impacts that come from this development. That will not, not what affordable housing advocates want to hear or people who want, you know, affordable units. But we need to bring some luxury housing into the community. That would drive up the amount of dollars that we take in and less the impacts. If that makes sense. And I think Tony could do a better job explaining it after you. But, you know, committed to reducing taxes as much as we can, of course. It's something that I think every mayor has to do. But it's at what expense? What services do you cut to do that? You know, what positions go unfilled? You know, and I have to take a hard look at, you know, there's only certain places that I could really... You know, you can look at City Hall and say, "Ah, you brought this person on for a hundred thousand." Or you brought this one on for, you know, ninety thousand. City Hall itself is a small number when it comes to the budget. You know, you start looking at your public safety, you know, your schools or, you know, it's a big number. The building, you know, it's capital improvements. You know, where do you want the suffering to happen? Because insurance costs don't go up. Insurance payments, pension obligations, costs of doing business in the city just keep going up. There's so many things, you know, Councilor McLaughlin touched upon it, you know, the changes that the administration made regarding certification again, sorry?
Direct certification.
Direct certification. That alone cost the city millions of dollars, right? Millions of dollars that one change in the administration made. Governor knows that we're not happy about it. We're trying to work on it. The Senator helped us get a million dollars last year to fill, was it a million dollars last year in the state budget?
Roughly, yes.
In the pot hole account? You know? You know, that's a tough, that's a tough thing to swallow. So the only way that we can truly reduce taxes is by bringing developments... I mean, like, don't forget, the resort is going to be open in 2019. It's still going to generate thirty-plus million dollars. That's a year away, you know? This next fiscal budget, you know, we can weather it. We have twelve and a half million dollars coming in from win. It's going to go to the taxes. Hope the budget stays just the way it is, no increases. Still do the water and sewer improvements. Still do some capital improvements. There'll be some parks in there. There'll be some, you know, renovations to some municipal buildings. But we need to be cognizant of what's happening through the ZBA, what they're being permitting, you know? We need to change our zoning laws. We need to create some more urban renewal plans to entice some better development in our city. Because that's what it comes down to. You know, does a building down in the GE Parkland that, you know, sits, a property that sits there with empty transport containers, we want to see in the city? Or do we want to see some luxury housing or some restaurants or possibly hotels with a water taxi shuttle? It's what, how we change our zoning, right? Do we tie in transportation to that area where now it makes it more valuable and we get a better development that generates more money? It comes down to zoning. It comes down to planning, zoning, making, permitting. Permitting certain areas for certain redevelopment that then developers will come in and say, "Oh, I don't have to go through all this, you know, for a year or two and cost me X amount of dollars. I can come in and permit this hotel of the site. I'm going to do it. I'm going to come in and then come in and permit this luxury housing development. I'm going to do it," right? You know, to say I'm going to reduce my budget next year by a million of dollars, it's not going to happen. I can't do it. I'd have to lay off cops and firemen and public works employees and City Hall employees to reduce the budget by any dollar amount. Any dollar amount to reduce the city budget would be not doing capital improvements and not retaining employees.
All right. And I appreciate that, you know, you understand the impact on the taxpayer and you're trying to blend the landscape so that, you know, we can add in revenue and not really drive all the services. So, and I know the next couple of years are going to be tough. You know, we'll do, we'll do what we can. But, you know, hopefully, there's enough going on that in the interim, we look at the spending, we look at the budget really tightly every year that comes in over the next couple. And hopefully, the revenues that are going to be generated are going to be able to allow us to reduce the rate. It'll still be with the growth and with everything else that's there and all the development. Maybe it'll put us in the same position where we would be currently, if we can drive that number down. Because if we don't, what's going to end up happening is we've got people who aren't going to be able to live here anymore. Families who have been here for generations aren't going to be able to afford to live here. It's like what happened in other communities. Children can't afford to buy. You can't afford to live in the community you grew up in. You're going to have to go somewhere else. So I don't want to have to tell folks, you know, we love our community. It's a great city and it is. And we're doing everything we can, but you've got to go live somewhere else unless you want to rent. You know, and maybe the rent's going to be a little higher than you can afford. So, I mean, I don't want to be in that position. I don't think any of my colleagues want to be. I'm sure you don't want to be in that position. So I'm just asking that really take a tight sharp pencil to the budget as best we can. Wherever it can be made for any kind of holdback on services for now. In that way, we can kind of bridge this gap till we get to the point where these revenues are coming in a couple of years from now, maybe we're sitting pretty then. You know, maybe there's such an influx of cash that we don't even have to reduce services and we can still cut the rate down. I mean, that's a win for everybody. I know that's what we'd all love to see.
Yeah.
But in the interim...
That's going to happen. I mean, that is, that's going to happen. But remember now, Everett's been not affordable for a home, to buy a home, not even just the last couple of years. It's been like that for a long time. I mean, you can ask probably yourselves, some of your children. I mean, I'm sure Rosa can attest to this. Some of her children had a hard time finding houses that they could afford and, you know, went outside the city to buy homes. What's that?
They paid double.
They paid double? Well, that's not what your son told me. But, you know, you hear from a lot of people in the city that they've gone out, they couldn't find a property in Everett that they could afford. They had to leave the city of Everett. And that's been happening for years.
Yeah.
Friends of mine.
And it's sad. It's sad when someone has to leave their hometown because they can't afford it. So I want to do whatever we can collectively to make that, you know, the exception to the rule as opposed to, you know, if things keep along the way now, it's going to become really the majority of the story. You know, and it's good to bring in the luxury development and we've got the microunits and everything like that. But that's going to change the nature of the city quite a bit. It takes it away from the family feel.
Well, you always have family feel. You have eight thousand units housing here that you have plenty of families that are always going to come out of these units.
I want them to be Everett families. I don't want there to be families coming from another place that can't afford that anymore and they come here and all the Everett folks are finding another place to live, another zip code.
Well, that's like, that's that meeting right now that we should probably go into. The neighborhood developers from Chelsea, that's the type of developments they do is affordable housing. I mean, there are, is it six? I keep, I'm getting my numbers here. Six. Six townhouses that are going to be sold, you know? Three-bedroom townhouses are going to be sold from two seventy-five to three and a quarter. I mean, we should all be in there right now. We should probably leave this now soon because I have to leave this soon and go there. I mean, and seventy-seven units of senior housing and seventy percent of those vouchers are going to be Everett residents. Seventy percent of the vouchers. Seventy percent of the people are going to be Everett, have Everett preference, the seniors.
How about the townhouses? Are those going to be preference for Everett?
Everett preference.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate the answers on it. And I know that we all, she had the same... Well, I appreciate that, I appreciate the answers on it, and I know that we all, she had the same end goal. So, we'll just continue to work on it together.
Thank you.
For the next three years. Thank you. I have any other questions?
Councilman McKenon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the, the mayor, um, and also Mr. Demus. I, I know that the three-year plan, I was the sponsor on that, I thought that was gonna be a, a good thing and it actually turned out to be a good thing. Reason being is because if we didn't do that, we would've been having a higher tax rate to the people now on the evaluations of their houses going up. So, uh, I know there was a co-sponsor, Mr. Capone was on it with me, and the mayor had signed off on that, so I just wanted to get that out and say thank you for that. I think what we have to do is we have to all work together, uh, as was suggested at this meeting tonight, to actually see what we're gonna do with this additional funding and stuff like that, that's gonna be coming in years to come. Part of the, the scoop, I'm, I'm gonna touch on that a little bit too, is because you've had, uh, one year there was five hundred children showed up in the middle of the year. So, that was, that was leading to a portion of that money. So, uh, that right there is a problem within itself, within our own community that we have to address and that may be addressed.
I don't think it was five hundred kids that came in one year, middle of the year.
What, what was it though? Cause that's, that's the story that we got.
No, no.
If it's a different story, we need to know.
Yeah, it's not five hundred kids that came in. Oh, okay, all right. I can get you that number, but I think in the last five years or six years, they had an increase of five hundred kids.
Of just five hundred?
Yeah, the last like four, five years.
All right. And then this new, uh, formula that's up there, right?
That, that's, you know, there's a lot of things that are killing us.
I mean, that's killing us right there.
Yeah, right. But, you know, when you only have a certain amount of money to spend, you can only spend that certain amount of money.
Oh, yeah. I, I agree.
So, uh, you can't, you can't overspend your budget.
Sure. And, and, and as we cannot do it here in City Hall.
We can't do it here either.
Uh, as well as now-
And that goes, that goes back to the thing that, uh, the superintendent and myself, uh, and you also, do not want our kids or our residents to go without, right? So, but, you know, you, 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 so you can't blame City Hall for the schools in a, in a deficit. So, I know there's been some, some information out there that blaming the administration or the city, city council. Right. Yeah, so it's not, there's no fault here. All we can do is try to help, stop the bleeding.
And-
And that's what we're gonna do.
And that's what we're trying to do now.
But there are gonna be, there are gonna be reductions in staff and, and they're gonna have to figure that out and, um, it's unfortunate.
Now, Mr. Mayor, you also touched on the, um, you know, the, getting our fair share of the housing that, uh, you know, per room and stuff like that. Uh, it was a former colleague, I think, and myself from the ward that actually put something together. I just asked Sergio to get it, but it was, uh, square footage per occupancy ordinance, it's already on the books.
Yes.
If we utilize that, can we actually go and, and talk to these people about their, you know, their, uh, five people in one room and, you know, stuff like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that being done?
It, it is, when we gain that, when we gain entrance into the home and the fire department, uh, have had this conversation with Chief Colley. We, right now, we have a couple of firefighters from, uh, fire prevention, uh, but we'll be looking to, uh, I'm gonna be working with President Hardy on this also. Looking to build that number up, uh, so that we can get into, uh, more of the properties.
Because I think, I think that right there would help out with, uh, you know, whether it be taxation reasons-
There's also state law that, uh, I, I, I as the mayor do not have access to every kid that lives in the city of Everett with their addresses. I mean, isn't that-
We need, we, don't we need that?
I would, I would think that the mayor of the city should have access to every child's address where they're saying they're living at. I mean, uh, um, just to, to make sure that they're living there, cause we have two truant offices and eight thousand kids.
Yeah.
Now, if you're, if you're a good kid and you're standing under the radar and they're getting dropped off every morning going to school and you have no issues, there's no reason why the truant office is gonna check on you. You're late every day and you have, you're acting up, then they, they do their due diligence, but, no, no, and that's not to say there's a lot, but there may be. There's gotta be something.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
No, this, this-
And it's not, and I'm not, and I'm not blaming the schools.
No.
I'm not, I'm not blaming anyone.
Put it this way, the, the blame game, that, that doesn't-
It's no good.
That does not, nothing. What, what we need to do is find solutions and that's what we have, so.
But if I can, uh, Councilman McKenon, can we somewhat recess and, and head right next door?
I, I'm through, I'm done.
No, come back here, is that, does anybody wanna join me in the next meeting, in the next room to, uh, say a few words?
The mayor that keeps going on.
Uh, there's one, there's one speaker left, then we can make-
They're taking comments now and they made ends, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave.
All right. Is there a motion for a five-minute recess? Do I have a second? All in favor? Pose? Five-minute recess. We're not gonna get anything. I had, I had, I had seen you in the very beginning, but she started speaking. And it was like, okay, does she realize that somebody's gonna invite her up first? Calling the meeting back in order. We have a quorum. Uh.
Do you hear the call?
We do have a quorum. Uh, last, uh, Councilman DeFlorio had the floor.
Um, Mr. Chairman, through you. I can ask Eric Demus the question. It doesn't have to be the mayor. Because they got off the subject and went on through the school problem, I just want to clarify a question. The school is looking for eight million dollars. Is that correct? Is it a total of eight million or is it what the four million we already gave them?
No. Um, there, there's been a lot of misinformation that has been put out. Um, the school is not missing any money. The school is not, um, the mayor and city council is not looking to cut the school's budget by eight million dollars.
I understand.
The way it is right now is at the current spending level.
Right.
With the personnel on hand, if they continue to spend at the rate they are right now through the end of the year, then we're forecasting they'll be over by over the eight million dollars overspent. And so the issue is to address it right now.
Okay.
How much can the city afford to address the problem?
But according to Council McGlaughlin, it's due because of the formula changing. The formula changed in September when we gave them the money. Is that correct? Or was there a new formula that come out?
The, the formula actually changed two years ago and the state has been, um, I, I don't want to say trying to address it because there's only about ten communities that are significantly negatively impacted. The rest of the communities throughout the entire Commonwealth are actually receiving more money.
Okay.
So it's an issue that it's a third rail nobody wants to touch because it only impacts a handful of communities. However, going through the budget process where the governor produces a budget and then it goes to the House Ways and Means and the Senate Ways and Means, some of the negative impact from the change in their statutory formula, um, was mitigated. Um, this year it, it was mitigated even less. But this is, this is not something, something that is new.
All right, I'm going to stop that discussion right now if I could, only because it's not what we have on the agenda.
It hasn't been on, what's on the agenda all night, Mr. President.
I'm doing, I'm doing my best to pull it back into the spending.
You're pulling it back now, okay? Why are you pulling it back now?
Because we're now totally off the topic of the, of the reduced tax rate.
We were off the topic right from the beginning. If you're going to pull things off the topic, do it right from the beginning, but don't do it to me because I will not accept it. I have a voice like everybody else. I get elected like everybody else. Just because I'm a woman, you're not going to win that fight.
Counselor, it has nothing to do with.
Yes, it does.
No, it absolutely does not.
Yes, it does. Absolutely.
How do you base that?
Absolutely. You made everybody go off the subject all night. There was questions on, on the schools right from the beginning.
The questions came regarding spending, okay? There is nothing and.
And I want to understand the spending. I want the people to understand the spending.
And I've allowed the question to be answered. How much further do you, do you want to pursue the school question when it's not on our agenda?
It hasn't been on the agenda all night.
I'm asking you a question.
I don't want to pursue.
How much further?
I want to find, I'm trying to find a solution to the problem if I have to march to the governor's office tomorrow morning. I need to understand what's going on if I'm going to go to the governor's office.
I, I, I understand what you're saying and I will more than happy to talk to you about some, and I'm talking, that I'm trying to work on right now.
I'm all done.
My question is done. Thank you, Mr. Demus.
Are there any more questions regarding the item? Thank you. Have any motions? We have the item in front of us.
Um, so, no, no, no comments. But I don't think we should just adjourn. I mean, we're here. This is the committee of the whole. And we, we have to go back, we go back to our own branch, you know, to put this out. So I, it should be referred, but it should be referred with something besides just we, we're done, you know? And I'm not too sure what we should do. And we, we've questioned the mayor and we've questioned Mr. Demus. Everybody has had a hand in, in, in talking about it. Uh, I think my question got sort of, sort of answered, but I don't know. Maybe it could answer twice and I didn't realize it. It did, it did, did get answered anyway. And, uh, I think we learned a lot of information tonight, but I don't really know how to report this out except to say that we had a meeting. Uh, it was a, uh, a fruitful result in the meeting.
Suggestion from the clerk is that we report it out to place it on file and that we just refer, and then refer it back to sponsor? So the recommendation, would you send it, replace it on file and then it would be accepted as a communication at a regular meeting?
I'll put that in for motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to place this on, uh, to, uh, for this out, back to the body. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.